After the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Marked the meeting open at 7:02 PM. And we will start off with public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment. We'll move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes from the February 3rd, 2015 regular meeting. Could I have a motion to do so? Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number five, first selectman's report. As of Friday, the town has officially closed the sale of the old Lopresti School. Just now I received the check in the amount of $335,000 from Warren, which will be used to improve the overall condition of our town buildings. Will be taking action on a specific resolution later in the meeting on the usage of these funds. The town has depleted its snow budget for the year. We will be discussing a transfer later in the meeting outlining how we will be handling things until the end of the season. We project to be about 103,000 over in material and 23,000 over in labor. These projections allow for four more additional storms. I have brought along the 2014-2015 snow event report that keeps a log in the cost of every storm, if anyone would like to review it. So we break every storm down by material and labor costs. That's all in this book, which is kept in my office. I'm scheduled to present my budget to the Board of Finance on Thursday, March 5th, at 7:00 PM. At that point, I'll do review of the town's overall financial position, including debt service, fund balance, and expense projections for this year and the upcoming year. Had an initial meeting with Jim Gallagher regarding the road program and the work to be done for spring of 2015. Based on some conversations that we have had, we may be able to include about $500,000 worth of category C roads. Jim and I will be meeting again on Thursday to discuss in greater detail. I hope to have him at our next meeting to talk about timelines and schedule for the project. At our March 3rd meeting, I'll be showing you the next, or excuse me, the master quarterly report for the town that I will use part of the, as I will use as part of the presentation to the 10-year strategic planning committee. My first report to them is scheduled for the third week in April. So if you remember when that group was created, myself, the Director of Operations, and the Director of Finance will report to that group once a quarter. I attended the final walkthrough of the Fish Bypass with staff from the contractor, which is Master Patisto, Milo McBroom, and Chuck Lee. We are waiting for some final paperwork from the state to officially turn the park over to the town. Once that paperwork is received and reviewed by Attorney Stanek, it will be presented to this board for final approval and acceptance. As it stands, we are projecting the fence to come down and the park to be open for the season on or around Friday, April 3rd, weather permitting. So with that, that closes the first selectman's report. And we'll move on to item number six, presentation from the Boys and Girls Club. I'm not sure who's going to make that. So if you can just introduce yourself and speak into the microphone.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us. We came tonight so that we can give you a little bit of an update in regards to the Seymour Boys and Girls Club unit. And I thought who better to do that than the person who's currently running it and running all the daily activities and the programs out of there. And we also brought one of our members to kind of share with you his experience at the Boys and Girls Club. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce the Director of the Program, Jessie Patrick.
Hello and good evening. I want to start out by thanking you all very much for your support. We've had a fair amount of success this past year, and none of that would have been possible if it weren't for the support of you all. So it's very much appreciated by our organization. We opened last year, January of 2014, as a satellite program of the Boys and Girls Club of the Lower Nogatuck Valley. As of today, we have 86 enrolled after-school members with an average daily attendance of 65. And every day, these members walk through our doors and they engage in a number of programs that enable academic success, healthy lifestyles, leadership, and positive attitudes. Our Friday night program for middle schoolers, TGIF, currently has 181 members with an average weekly attendance of 91. And those numbers are broken down on the handout that Don just gave you. We are expecting that number to grow with the cessation of winter sports, as it did last year. By popular request from the parents, we have also extended our hours of operation to 6:30, and we now open on days off from school and holidays. We also try to open on snow days. We've opened a few this season, some of them have been a little tougher. We were also, at the beginning of this year, officially recognized by the Boys and Girls Club of America as a unit. So that was a very proud moment for us. As you already know, when a town invests in a Boys and Girls Club the way that you guys have invested in us, you're not just investing in an after-school program, you are investing in the future of your community. And I can say with pride and conviction that you guys have a very bright future, because these are some of the most wonderful children that I have had the pleasure of working with. And I think the best person that you could possibly hear the influence our program has on them is one of our kids. So I would like to present to you, club member extraordinaire, John Buzik.
Hi, my name is John Buzik. I've been a member of the Seymour Boys and Girls Club since September this year. Before I started at the club, I spent my afternoons watching TV and playing video games, which wasn't benefiting me in any way. Now, I spend my afternoons at the club where I have extensive opportunities to better my life. When I walk through the blue door each day, I am greeted by a positive smiling face. Seeing a positive smiling face each day injects some positivity into my life and immediately puts me in a good mood. After signing in, I pull out my homework and me and Jessie get to work. This is a good change of pace because previously, I did not have someone to check my homework and help me accountable. My mother is a hardworking, single mother of two teenage girls. And we are handful to manage, to say the least. I would often take advantage of this by not doing my homework, and my grades were suffering because of this. Now that I come to the club, my grades are steadily improving, not only because I am held accountable, but because the staff members have taught me the importance of important grades for my future. I am also the treasurer of the Torch Club, the Boys and Girls Club Youth Leadership Program. As the treasurer, I am responsible for stacking store, overseeing our sales, and pricing items for sale. This has taught me the value of a dollar and given me self-esteem and confidence. Because I am the officer of the Torch Club, I have maintained good grades. This gives me the motivation to keep my grades up, because I do not want to lose my standing in Torch Club. Maybe most importantly, the relationships I have established at the club have affected my life by giving me mentors to look up to and lean on. Brianna and I have become very close since September. She gives me confidence by reminding me of the great things that I have done and that I am capable of doing. He is my constant friend that is always available to give me guidance and help me through hard times. If not for Brianna, I would probably be going down the same path that I was before, making bad decisions, acting irresponsibly, and letting my grades slip. Through my role in Torch Club, I want to be the kind of leader that Brianna is. As you can see, the Boys and Girls Club has had a life-changing effect on my life. I know this because it has been a learning experience, including teaching me valuable lessons and giving me a new attitude on life. I am only, I am one member of only 100, nearly 170. My future is brighter because of the club, so imagine all the great futures that are starting at the Boys and Girls Club of Seymour. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, is why I've become a director of this organization. That's, that's why. Was looking back in my notes, and it was actually two years ago this month that I had reached out to Kirk and wanted to introduce our new executive director to him. Our long-term executive director had retired, and the club put our faith in Shay, and here it is, two years later. Can't thank her enough for the leadership she's brought to the organization and the results that she's been able to push our staff to achieve for our children. It's just, thank you for bringing us to Seymour and allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Shay or Don or Jessie? Go.
Keep up the good work, thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much.
You can come down anytime if you want, play pool, ping pong, hookah.
I play a mean game.
That's right, we will have a walkthrough with our state legislators next Thursday, correct? Wednesday? Next Wednesday. So the three state officials that represent Seymour will all be there to tour the club and, I don't think so, looking forward to that as well. Thank you very much for everything you guys do for Seymour. Okay. Next item is item number six, no, excuse me, item number seven. Yeah, item number seven, discussion, take possible action on town clerk state library grant application. You have a letter in your packets to myself from Susan DeBarber, Town Clerk, and I'll read it into the record. Requesting the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen to empower the town clerk to execute the application and contract with the state library for a $3,000 grant. The grant will be used to upgrade our land record software system. This will bring our land record images back approximately three years from 1982. This provides easy accessible information for attorneys, panel searchers, and the public. So at this point, I will entertain a motion to empower the town clerk to execute the application and contract with the state library for a $3,000 grant. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Len, under discussion. This is something that we do every year, so this is just more of a formality than anything else. So if there's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number eight, update on the ordinance committee. And I'll just give a quick update. Myself, Nicole and Karen met last week, and we went through the four ordinances that were in front of us. Those four ordinances were the Fire Department ordinance with regard to their membership being out of town, remember that one? An update of the sidewalk ordinance, an ordinance dealing with delinquent taxes, and finally, the veterans' tax exemption that we've been talking about for a while. So Rich joined us in that meeting, went through, we had a very lively discussion. I think Karen, and I don't want to speak for Karen and Nicole, but I think all three of us are on the exact same page with everything. Rich is writing up some sample ordinances for us, which we expect to have for our meeting on March 3rd, to let the board look over and see if you all are in agreeance with our recommendations. If that is the case, we will follow the normal ordinance procedure with public hearings and so on and so forth. If any of you want to weigh in and make any changes to that, we can certainly go ahead and entertain those at that time. I expect that the first three, the firehouse, the sidewalk, and the delinquent tax ordinances will go into effect as soon as possible. The veterans' tax exemption, we would like to put that into effect for July 1st of 2015 with the new tax year, so that our disabled veterans can take advantage of that. So that's just a quick summary of what we did. We'll have more information on the third. Karen, Nicole, is there anything you want to add?
No.
Something to add? Okay. All right. Okay, item number nine, discussion, take possible action on resolution regarding revenue from a sale at 29 Maple Street. Oh boy, Roger. All right. No, no. All right, so this, this is a resolution restricting the use of the proceeds from the sale of Lopresti School. Whereas, on February 13, 2015, the town of Seymour conveyed the former Lopresti School property to 29 Maple Street LLC for a sum of $335,000, and whereas, town-owned buildings and capital assets require regular ongoing maintenance and repairs, and whereas, the proceeds derived from the sale of a capital asset should be utilized to preserve the value of our other capital assets. Now therefore be it resolved that the proceeds generated from the sale of the former Lopresti School located at 29 Maple Street, Seymour, Connecticut, are hereby required to be deposited into a restricted special revenue account, and be it further resolved that the proceeds are to be utilized for capital expenditures, ongoing repairs, and maintenance of town-owned capital assets. So can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
No motion.
Wow. Motion by Nicole, second by, was that you, Paul?
No.
No?
I think it was Len.
It was all in that.
Oh, yeah.
Not that I don't approve, they're just quicker than.
Yeah, okay. Second by Len then. Okay, so just under discussion, what this is going to do is it's going to put the $335,000 into a special revenue account that Tony and I will have access to, and that we can only use to reinvest back into our existing building stock. My hope is either at our meeting on the 3rd or a meeting on the 17th, we will come forward with the recommendations on the new standing building committee. Bless you.
Bless you.
Whose charge will be to monitor and to analyze all of our buildings. Rory's just going through, making some final phone calls, making sure everyone is on board with that. And they will help dictate how this money is to be spent. As we've talked about, we have some buildings in desperate need, particularly the community center. So a lot of this money will be invested right back into that building. But I didn't want this money to fall back into the general fund and to get used on, get used on other things. I thought it was important that this money be spent directly on our buildings, as we had discussed way back when, when we had first talked about selling the buildings. So, any questions or comments? Everybody's comfortable? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Excuse me, next item on the agenda is item number 10, discussion, take possible action on resolution regarding potential revenue from BRRFOC. Okay, resolution derived for Covanta Bristol Incorporated and Bristol Resource Recovery Facility. For those who don't know, that is where we send our garbage. Whereas, the town of Seymour is a member of Bristol Resource Recovery Facility, and whereas, Covanta Bristol Incorporated is the operator of the facility, and whereas, it is possible that the facility may generate unanticipated revenue for the town of Seymour, now therefore be it resolved, all revenue generated by the facility and/or Covanta and paid to the town of Seymour shall be deposited into a restricted special revenue account, and be it further resolved that such revenue shall only be utilized to enhance, repair, or maintain the Seymour Transfer Station, or to support other environmental-related expenditures. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole, under discussion. Bristol Resources was a consortium that we were in with several other towns. We've been involved in this for a little over 20 years now. The initial reason for this group coming together was to create the plant that is used to burn all the garbage. Before, when it was initially put into place, it was determined that once the note was paid off, that the communities that paid for it would no longer own the facility, that it would go to Covanta. Covanta is now the owner of that. They have given us very favorable rates in which to dispose of our garbage. But now that BRRFOC is dissolving, essentially, we're getting payments back of fund balance, we're getting payments back of excess capital, things like that. To date, we've received about $190,000, which is sitting in a special revenue account. We're projecting to receive about another 130 over the next two or three months. One of the things that BRRFOC has asked is that we use this money either to improve our transfer station or for any other type of environmental issue. So the money's currently sitting there, it has not been touched, but we wanted to formalize this. Again, we don't want this money just to fall to the bottom line in the general fund, we want it to be used for an appropriate and specific matter. So that's where this sits. Any questions with regards to that?
Do we have a plan as to what we want to actually do with it?
Nothing specific yet, no.
Can we use it towards the UST, the underground storage tanks that we want to remove?
Potentially, yes. We do have a, oddly enough, a sinking fund for that, where we've been putting money into it. We currently have about $45,000 in that fund, and we're, Tony and I were actually discussing last week about taking our first tank out of the ground. So, so yes, but it could go to something like that. Because that is quite a liability potential for the town of Seymour down the road. Actually, the one we're looking at is the one for Citizens Endurement. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number 11, discussion, take possible action on Seymour Lady Wildcat Shreddit Connecticut fundraiser. Okay, in your packets is a letter to the Board of Selectmen regarding the fundraiser venue request at the Seymour Community Center parking lot area on April 18, 2015. Seymour Lady Wildcat Booster Club would like to use the parking lot adjacent to the community center and the skate park for document shredding. Fundraiser to be scheduled for Saturday, April 18, 2015, beginning no earlier than 7:30 and ending no later than 1:30 PM. Shreddit Connecticut would bring one document shredding truck to be parked in the lot for a two-to-four hour time slot to be determined, plus approximately 30 minutes before and after for setup and cleanup. They offer this service beginning in April, Saturdays only, as a community event. The event would provide a valuable, convenient opportunity for individuals and small businesses in our community to safely dispose of personal and confidential documentation. As a fundraiser for our team, the site is a safe location for our players to assist with a service event and thank the community for their continued support of the Seymour High School Lady Wildcat softball program. My next steps are to request approval from the Board of Education and confirm the date with Shreddit. Thank you for your consideration, I hope to hear from you soon, and it's respectfully submitted. Okay. So also attached to that, you can see that this was discussed at the Wednesday, January 21st Seymour Recreation Commission meeting as well. And it's my understanding that it was approved by those folks as well. So Warren, we're just essentially giving our permission to allow the use of the community center parking lot on Saturday, April 18. Okay, with that then, I'll entertain a motion to allow the Seymour Lady Wildcat Booster Club to hold a Shreddit fundraiser event in the Seymour Community Center and Skate Park parking lot on Saturday, April 18, 2015, beginning no earlier than 7:00 AM and ending no later than 1:30 PM. Motion by Paul, second by Karen. Is there any other discussion?
Would the skate park be open to allow the kids to skate during that time as well, and any events being at the community center?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Everything will still be open.
And just clarification, I thought you said no earlier than 7:30.
7:30. What did I say?
That's what you just said, seven.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry, amend that. I said, I think I did say seven, so I apologize, 7:30.
And they'll have the appropriate insurance?
Yes. Yep.
So when are they going to notify you of the block, once that's, as it gets closer?
Uh, yes. As soon as, and based on what she's saying in here, as soon as she gets that date confirmed from Shreddit. And the Board of Ed. Not sure why the Board of Ed isn't involved, but I guess because of the kids. Okay? Everyone comfortable?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing none, all, or no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number 12, discussion, take possible action regarding the Seymour High School Athletic Field. You have in your packets a letter from the chairperson of the turf committee. At our meeting on February 5, 2015, the Seymour High School Athletic Field Committee voted to select NAFIS and Young Engineers as our recommendation for the architectural engineering firm for the renovation of the Seymour High School Athletic Complex. We found them to be the best candidates for the position based on the submittal, submitted qualifications and proposals, as well as the interviews we conducted with the candidates. We hope you will approve our recommendation, thank you for your consideration, thank you. And that's from Nicole, who is the chairperson of the committee. So we have received already an, a tentative contract from NAFIS and Young, is currently being reviewed by Rich. The hope is that I will have that back for this board to officially vote on by our meeting on March the 3rd. Any questions with regards to that?
Yeah, Kurt, I got, and it came up at our meeting. With the contract that Rich is reviewing, is that merely the state contract or town's contract with NAFIS and Young? And should that include any of the, any items that the committee would like to have in that contract? I mean, we've discussed that, and we thought we might have Rich come to one of our meetings to see what, if there's anything concerns that the committee might have.
Is it? It's an agenda item for you on Thursday? So you guys will see that contract and have the ability to?
And Rich will be there?
I can't speak for Rich, no.
Okay, so, but we will get him the information.
Yes, yep. So yeah, any comments that you have, any concerns, anything you want to have added? Yep, just get that over, if he's not there, we'll make sure that that's, that's included. It's not a problem.
I also, as a quick comment, the three groups that we interviewed were all very good. You know, they were all very good. And, you know, probably all qualified as well. All right, Mike, that's enough.
You all set, Mr. Flynn?
So, I, I mean, and I'm, you know, I'm happy with the folks we chose. I mean, it would have been nice if we could have cherry picked and put different people, but it's, it's, they did it, they did an excellent job, all three committees, all three companies that did present to us. I was very happy with the results as well.
Does everybody on the board know the three finalists? It was NAFIS and Young, Milo McBroom, and Don Smith, and Silver Petroselli were the three groups. So, and just to echo Paul's comments, all three groups were very good. They did excellent presentations, it came down to, I think, just comfort level with who they would pick, and just some of the little things that they said along the way. So Jim has served the town very well, and I expect he will serve the town very well in this capacity as well, too, so. As I said, I'll be meeting with Jim on Thursday to talk about the roads. We'll also be discussing the turf project. Want to get timelines for everything to make sure that everything goes smoothly over the next six months or so with these two big projects that they'll be handling, so. All right, item number 13. In conversation, before I read the resolution, just to give you a little background, yes, we have gone through this before.
Excuse me, Kurt, do we have to vote on that last one?
No, we'll vote on the actual contract itself.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no, not a problem, good question. This, again, is, has to do with the bonding issue for the $5.6 million appropriation for roads that was approved by the residents by referendum vote back in November. Rory was just doing some cleanup items with Doug Gillett, our bond counsel, and Doug asked for this additional resolution. So I'll read it into the record, and then we will take a vote. Whereas, the town of Seymour, by resolution presented at a special town meeting held October 21st, 2014, and approved at referendum held November 4th, 2014, appropriated 5.6 million for the town of Seymour Road Program 2014, and authorized the issue of bonds or notes and temporary notes in an amount not to exceed 5.6 million to finance the appropriation. And whereas, said resolution authorized the Board of Selectmen to delegate to appropriate officers of the town certain determinations and actions in connection with the issuance of such bonds or notes and temporary notes. Now therefore resolve that the first selectman and the treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, form, and other details of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes. To bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption of interest on the bonds, notes, and temporary notes from federal income taxation, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years, to make representation and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds, notes, and temporary notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, to sell the bonds, notes, and temporary notes at public or private sale, to execute and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to sell, issue, and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented? Motion by Len, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes, seven zero. Next item is item number 14, discussion of impossible action on a resolution making certain determinations in connection with the financing of the town of Seymour's $220,000 2014 Facilities and Capital Equipment Acquisition and Improvements Project. Again, this is something that we had already gone through and review, reviewed and discussed, but again, during the cleanup phase, Doug has asked that we do this one more time, so I'll read this resolution again. Whereas, the town of Seymour, by resolution approved by the Board of Selectmen on November 5, 2014, acting in lieu of a special town meeting called for the date appropriated 220,000 for the town of Seymour 2014 Facilities and Capital Equipment Acquisition and Improvements Project, and authorized the issue of bonds or notes or temporary notes in an amount not to exceed 220,000 to finance the appropriation, and whereas, said resolution authorized the Board of Selectmen to delegate to appropriate officers of the town certain determinations and actions in conjunction with the issuance of such bonds or notes and temporary notes. Now therefore resolve that the first selectman and the treasurer are authorized to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, form, and other details of such bonds, notes, and temporary notes. To bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption of interest on the bonds, notes, and temporary notes from federal income taxation, including covenants to pay rebates of investments, earnings to the United States in future years, to make representation and enter into written agreement for the benefit of holders of the bonds, notes, and temporary notes to provide secondary market disclosure information. market disclosure information, to sell the bonds, notes, and temporary notes at public or private sale, to execute and deliver the notes, bonds, and temporary notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to sell, issue, and deliver the bonds, notes, and temporary notes. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
No motion.
Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes 7-0. Okay. Next item on the agenda is executive session. We have two executive sessions tonight, so the first executive session will be for personnel. It's an interview with our Community Services Director applicant. I'd like to invite into executive session Town Council Warren Holcomb, Town HR Director Michelle Wazakowski, and the potential candidate for the Community Services Director position. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session with those stated individuals at 7:32 PM.
No motion.
Motion by Karen, second by Len. Is there any discussion? All in favor?[1793.33]